Welcome, everybody. I'm Elliot Margulies. I'm with the Mid-Penn Media Center down the road. We're an agency that works with organizations and individuals to help them get their messages out on video and on the Internet and get their stories out. And we're here tonight to videotape, video-record this proceeding. So what are we going to do tonight? It started with Governor -- well, I actually found out earlier that it started from the grassroots. But Governor Newsom adopted the strong suggestions of people like the Alzheimer's Association, and he issued an executive order last June, and he mandated a master plan on aging for the state of California. It's going to be written in October. But meanwhile, we are meeting here tonight, and our part is going to be written in March and sent to them. This plan will address everything from transportation and housing issues as they relate to seniors, to higher education and veteran affairs, and of course, the health of seniors. So our focus tonight is on services for the aging and seniors living with disabilities, what are commonly known as long-term services and supports. Long-term because we need them for a lot of years, and supports, this includes services like adult daycare, which is what this room is used for during the day, adult daycare. It includes support for aging at home. It's like home-delivered meals. It's speech therapy. It's helping the home with daily activities like bathing, eating, toileting, when you're taking care of someone who can no longer do that for themselves. And this is mostly non-medical assistance that's just not covered by insurance, as most of you already know. So we're talking about help both for the person that's aged and for the caregivers who are doing their best to support their loved ones. Let's find out a little bit about who's here tonight. Let me get rid of this first page. How many of you are family caregivers? Raise your hand. So we have maybe a quarter of the group tonight are family caregivers. And how many of you have a loved one that's in assisted care or residential care right now? So three or five? Five in that category. How many of you cared for someone who's passed away? A lot of you. Wow. So we're lucky to benefit from your experience. I just want to thank you for continuing to share your experience and your wisdom. And how many of you are here because, you know, I'm going to be old someday, and I want to live in a state that supports my needs? That's all of us. So again, thank you for showing up. Thank you for being such good citizens on a evening when you could be binge-watching something at home. This meeting is a part of the Long-Term Services and Supports Subcommittee of the Master Plan. And you're going to hear the acronym, if you haven't already, LTSS. So that's what it stands for. And the LTSS Subcommittee will file its report, as I mentioned, in March. Now, to really get us off to a good start, I want to introduce our County -- Santa Clara County Supervisor Joe Semidion. Don't get up yet. Joe was re-elected to the Santa Clara County Board of Supervisors in 2016, but oh my gosh, he has been serving us for so many years. He was one of -- he was a state senator. He represented us in the California State Assembly. He was mayor of Palo Alto. And he did a term way back in the late '80s on the Board of Supervisors that he and I were reminiscing about because I was in the role of interviewer. But he has been committed to ensuring that our community serves and is very inclusive of older adults. His work has helped to bring about the RIDE program, which provides rides to older adults in the West Valley. There's also a nurse navigator to help the Rose Kleiner Center here better serve its clients and their families. And he's worked on more effective tools to combat financial abuse against older adults. And in my personal opinion, when it comes to human needs as well as our environment, Joe has been a perennial champion. So thank you very much, and I welcome you to take over the mic.
Thank you. That's exceptionally kind. I was asked if I would come and just offer a word or two of welcome, which I am pleased to do. But I also want to offer thanks to all of the sponsors, including but not limited to the Alzheimer's Association, for pulling us all together. I want to thank you for being here, and more importantly, for what I hope will happen in a few minutes, I want to thank you for sharing your own experiences with folks from state government where I used to serve. And I want to thank Kim McCoy-Wade, who you will hear about in a minute, who is the Director of the Department of Aging and who is here to hear from us about the experiences that we've all had, and that if we share them tonight, can and will inform the state master plan for aging. And, you know, I know it's easy to be jaded about government and whether government ever listens. And what I want to tell you is, you have the Director of the Department of Aging, who is here specifically for one reason, and that is to listen on behalf of state government. But she can only listen if we are prepared to share our experiences, so that those experiences, as I say, will inform the development of the master plan. Now, I'm an elected official, so talking comes naturally to me. For some of you, that may not be the case. But I really do want to encourage you to speak up, even if it's a little personal, even if it feels like something that's outside your comfort zone. And to try and model that behavior, I want to share with you, and this was prompted by the reference to the RIDE program that works in the West Valley part of this county, I want to share with you a personal experience that I had, because I'm hoping that it will inform the master plan for education, excuse me, the master plan for aging, and that it will encourage you to speak up. As it happens, more than a decade ago, when I was in the California State Senate, I had an aging father living alone in Palo Alto, and a few of you in the room actually knew my father. And it was a challenge because he was by himself in his mid-'80s, and four days a week, 10 months a year, I was in Sacramento, only child. So how do you make that work? Every Thursday, when I came back from the Legislature, I would try and spin by his home in the College Terrace neighborhood, if it wasn't too late, just have a brief check-in, say, "How was your week, Dad? Everything go okay?" And I remember the Thursday when I sat on the couch and said, "How was your week, Dad? Everything go okay?" And he went, "Hmm, not so good." And I said, "Why? What's the matter?" He said, "Well, had to give up my car keys." Now secretly, I was thinking, "Thank God." No, many of you in the room have had these conversations with friends and family. But then it occurred to me, I said, "Well, wait a minute. So how are you getting around in suburban Palo Alto? How are you getting around?" And he said, "Well, I'm hitchhiking," said my 80-plus-year-old father. Now, truthfully, I wasn't altogether surprised because my father and I had hitchhiked around the Hawaiian Islands many years earlier together. But, you know, in the moment, my reaction was, "For God's sakes, Dad, you can't do that. That's dangerous. Why don't you take a cab?" And for any of you who are either of or have had family who were of the depression generation, you know what was coming next. When he said, "Why don't you take a cab? That's too expensive." So I said, "Well, look, Mary and I, my wife and I, Mary and I, look, we'll give you some cab script as like a Christmas present." "That's not the point. It's too expensive." "Well, you know, what about like outreach, paratransit, something like that?" "No, that's for old people," says my father in his mid-'80s. Okay. So finally, what I realized was that he was going to do what he was going to do. That was sort of his nature. My wife sometimes tells me she thinks that's genetic, but that's another thing. And I just asked him to be careful. And then a really sweet thing happened, which is, it became clear that people in the neighborhood figured it out, in his College Terrace neighborhood. And so when I would ask him, "Do people give you rides?" He said, "Yeah, particularly people in the neighborhood." They stopped because they figured it out, that Mr. Semidion didn't have his car anymore, didn't have his keys anymore, didn't have his license anymore. And so they would see him, literally at the side of the road with his thumb out, and they'd pick him up and take him to Pete's or wherever he was headed. And in many ways, that's a wonderful manifestation of the sense of community that we all wish we could feel. And in fact, for years, even after he passed away, people would come up and say, "Aren't you Senator Joe Semidion?" And I'd be, you know, very delighted to say, "Yes, I am," thinking they were going to talk about a piece of legislation I had authored. And they would say, "I used to give your dad a lift." Truly. And I would say, "Thank you." And that happened time after time after time, because, as I say, in a very sweet way, people figured it out and stepped up to help. But what we're all thinking, I think, is that we can't count on that informal network. We need to find a different and better way when those kinds of needs arise. That was first and foremost, part of my own experience, my own thinking, when folks in the West Valley communities of Saratoga, Cupertino, Campbell, Montessorino, and Los Gatos approached me about the lack of transportation options for seniors in those communities. And it is a direct part of the experience that we now call Ride: Reach Your Destination Easily in the West Valley. So it matters that people in government either have these experiences or hear of and understand these experiences. I don't know what your stories are going to be tonight, but I know every one of you has one or more. So please, share it. Send these good people back to Sacramento with a deeper understanding of what the needs of our senior community are, and then let's stay on them to make sure that they deliver. And I mean that, of course, in the warmest and most welcoming of ways. Thank you all very much for including me tonight. Elliot, back to you.
Joe, I don't think I ever told you this, but I picked up your dad. I lived at 1430 College Avenue, and I still remember his stories about walking across Portugal.
In his 60s, he walked from the top of Portugal to the bottom of Portugal. And then in his 70s, he said he was going to go back and walk across Portugal. And I said, "Well, why? You already done that?" And he said, "No, no. I'm going to walk across." I walked from top to bottom. And I said, "Well, why across?" And he said, "Well, because it'll be shorter." And he came back, and I said, "How was it?" And he said, "Well, I forgot that it was shorter, but it's up the mountain and then down the mountain." So thank you for that.
I do pick up hitchhikers, in case anybody has car trouble tonight when you get back to the parking lot. I want to introduce our three wonderful experts, who are all very involved in writing up the master plan, so we're talking to the right people tonight. First, there's going to be Kim McCoy-Wade is going to speak to us, and she's the Director of the California Department of Aging, and she's leading the whole development of this master plan. Maya Altman will speak after her, and Maya is the CEO of the Health Plan of San Mateo and is also a member of the Master Plan on Aging's Stakeholder Advisory Council. That's a mouthful, but that Stakeholder Advisory Council, they do the writing. And Susan Demoris is with the Alzheimer's Association, and she is the Policy Director there for the Northern California chapter, and is also a member of the Stakeholder Advisory Council who's going to do the writing. So they're going to just, one at a time, get up and then hand the mic to the next person, starting with Kim.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. This is such a delight to be here, and I can't think of a better way to set the tone for sharing our stories and listening. So thank you so much for being here. I'm going to do my level best to give you some information and then sit down and listen because that is why we're here. I have the great privilege of taking the executive order from Governor Newsom and making it real. And in order to do that, we need all of you to help us get it right, and then spend the next years, the next 10 years, it's a 10-year plan, making it real. So let's start that conversation by just saying, the governor quite simply did the executive order, both as he has shared his own personal experience with his parents' aging, and his father in particular dying right before he was sworn in, and his experience as a caregiver. But he's also a data-driven guy, and the data about the number of people aging, all of us experience this in our life, but that California is aging, he likes to say, "The Golden State's going gray." But I think that more interesting and exciting thing is not just that there's more of us aging, is that aging is changing. And it's changing in a lot of important ways that we've already talked about. One is it's getting a lot more diverse. California is a diverse state, majority-minority, but not older California yet, but we will be by 2030. And that has a lot of implications for different cultures, how we think about aging. It talks about services, about language access, about immigration status. Aging is going to look pretty different in 2030, and we need to be ready for that. We also have more and more people living alone. That's the big change from 1965, when we came up with this Medicare and Social Security system, is your four daughters, as one of our cabinet members says, our Cabinet Secretary for Veterans Affairs, you know, our aging policy back then was have a lot of daughters and keep them close, and then that's, there you go. So 2020, daughters are great, I'm one myself, but we need a new plan that isn't dependent on daughters and volunteer pickups, although those are obviously key parts. So that's a big piece of the change. People are living alone, whether they didn't have children, never had children, obviously LGBTQ communities have different children, people, children have across the country, children are working, all kinds of things that make, we need more than just your children and your neighbors to fill the circle. Another way aging is changing, quite frankly, is that people are facing much more poverty and homelessness and healthcare and housing. The social security that we all want as the vision for our country is not, is getting more precarious for more of us, and we need to shore that up. And then the last thing I'll say, as longevity has come out, is that there's more awareness of the phases of aging, right? This notion of kind of, there's this independent stage where you're walking across Portugal both directions, and then there's a time when maybe some more assistance might be helpful, and then there's a time maybe when there are some significant challenges and you become more frail, maybe even in a residential 24/7, and then there's some significant and special end-of-life issues. And that's not one thing. That's not, so the word aging encompasses multitudes, and kind of getting clear about that, if our own thinking, our own planning, is part of what we have to do, kind of change aging. Aging is changing, and we need to change too. So let's write a plan in a year that solves all that, right, ladies? That's what we're going to do. And so we've been listening and listening and learning and learning, and I just want to share with you really quickly some things that we're hearing and see how it resonates. I don't think it'll be a big surprise, but five of the issues that are coming up that people want to be sure are in this master plan, because the plan is not just supposed to be a state plan on the shelf. It's very much meant to be a local blueprint that communities can look at and see, hmm, how are we doing? And look at the data dashboard and say, "Oh, we're doing great with parks, but we could do more with volunteerism," or "We don't have many pay centers in our community," which is a really gold standard model of care. And you could do things, look at other communities and resource, and really use that as an action plan, not as a cynicism about government plans, which we all can have been through and share, but really get to work on. So, shocker, number-one issue for everybody's housing. Housing, 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 and housing. And it's in all the traditional ways of, is my housing accessible? Is it affordable? But I might want to live in a different kind of place for all those different stages of aging I just talked about. We have this whole romance of aging in place and staying in your home. Well, maybe your big home that you had when you had a whole family isn't the right home at every single one of those stages. But we all want to be in a home that we choose, that is the right home for us at that stage. So how do we make that accessible, affordable, near transit, in ways that actually make that a livable community for all? Second big issue that comes up is the help we need to stay in that home of our choice. And that's a lot what we're going to talk about. I really dislike this acronym, LTSS, but I'm coming to get used to it, Long-Term Services and Supports. But whether that's a Meals on Wheels or some care in the home, direct care in the home, what are all the services and supports that allow you to live in that home of choice for as long as you want? A third big issue, I will try, I'm juggling too much. Yes, I appreciate that. A third big issue that has come up a lot, and perhaps it's not a traditional government issue, but it's this issue around purpose. That's probably it. I just heard it sickened. This issue around purpose, or the flip side is isolation and exclusion. The combination of maybe being isolated in your home because of that lack of your license, the stereotyping that leaves people to leave older people out, there's a real sense of, how do we make sure that when we retire or experience some lack of mobility, we're not forgotten and left and depression and at the very deep end, suicide rates among older adults. And so these are concerns about meaning, deep concerns, and how can government help with that? The fourth one, again, your supervisor, I met him as an Assembly Member, so I have to correct myself, but your supervisor hit it, is this, the issues around safety and financial exploitation and abuse and neglect, whether it's in a nursing home or a family member or an Internet scammer. We do need to protect our most vulnerable folks. It's not necessarily that older adults are more subject to an Internet scam than the rest of us, but that may go on longer and get them deeper, and they may have shame around it, and then all of a sudden, we have a big problem. And so there's, and that, again, physical abuse at all settings. So do we really have a system to protect and prevent around that? And last but not least, in one word, disasters. Emergencies and disasters hit older folks the hardest. Preparation is harder, evacuation is harder, recovery when you've lost your assets, making sure where you're moved to is a shelter that's accessible and can support your medical, I mean, there's just a lot that we know from, unfortunately, Katrina, that we know from the wildfires, and that we're learning over and over with PSPS. So those are things I hear a lot about, those five issues, but there are many more. And I want to hear how that plays out in a community like this, that has all kinds of different people, cultures, incomes, housing, communities. This is a very diverse place, and there's going to be lots of different nuances on all that. On the particular topic of long-term services and supports, the committee headed by Susan and Maya and others on the Subcommittee have done a wonderful job, but I'm not going to steal their thunder, but they really have teed up three big questions, and I think are about to propose three big, multiple big answers, but what we're calling in our shorthand, "The Big Ideas." But the three big questions that they've been posing is, okay, how do we make sure that all older people know how to find services? How would you even know? What is it called? What's the phone number? What's, you know, we talk about, you know, for young kids, you might know first five. For over 50, do you know? And in some communities, definitely do, but it varies significantly state by state. So is there, how can we create a statewide system of information and assistance? Not just a 2-1-1, here's your directory, but actually assistance, helping people get to the right place. I think that's a big idea coming in answer to that question. Another big question is, okay, I got, I found the right website, the right person, the right phone number, is there actually help for me? Are there actually services? Are there actually? And that answer varies significantly, community to community, particularly once you get away from the coast, and particularly once you get into rural. There may not be alternatives to nursing homes in every community. There are not, like we want there to be. And so what do we, what can we do to ensure that, and particularly looking at healthcare spending and Medicaid spending, can we channel that towards the most independent setting that people want to be in, and not just towards the hospital and the nursing home? We need all those things at different times, but it's that right money, right time, right place magic. And then I think the third big question, you knew it was coming, how do we pay for all this? And again, there's a lot of, there's a big idea coming, really some great work, looking at what Washington State was the first in the country to do this last year, a new public benefit, similar to unemployment or maternity-paternity leave, that there'd be one for long-term care, that when you needed this at that stage of your life, you will have paid in through your payroll tax, and you can draw on it. So that's the new big idea that I'm going to let you all talk about. So I'm, we're really excited to hear the stakeholders' big ideas coming on that. We, I will, I'll stop, but I just want to ask you two things. One, please stay engaged. I know it's a complicated, comprehensive process, but we're trying to make it accessible. I put, our most recent update, we put it on the table, so if you want some reading as you leave, but we do, just unveiled last week a brand-new website meant to be friendlier, EngageCA.org. EngageCA.org. You get it? The A-G-E is capitalized. And I just got the text just now. It went live in Spanish and Chinese tonight, so we're moving, we're moving, three languages. And we have all kinds of ways you can comment on the site. Probably what I'm most excited about right now is Webinar Wednesday, every Wednesday from 9:30 to 11:00. We're doing a webinar on a different topic in aging. Healthy Aging kicked us off and had a great conversation about dementia and opioids and falls, lots of resources, and then inviting people to recommend. That just got posted, if you missed it. And then next Wednesday, yesterday, say Thursday, yesterday was older workers. The workforce is changing as more and more people are working longer for purpose and money. And then next Wednesday is housing. Did I mention housing? So we urge you to call in, listen in, zoom in, give us your comments there. If you miss it, check it out later. So those are the two big things. And then if you can engage is my first request, and then the other is, I need your lens. I need your lens. And what I mean by that is, we want to make sure this truly is part of California for All. And so our group has just directed us to form an Equity Work Group, which is forming to make sure that every single deliverable and action that we take is driven by equity. Our data metrics are about equity, that we're serving across race, across sexual orientation, gender identity. And that group, we just got 35 applications for it. We'll be announcing next week who's on it, and they'll start meeting in February. And their charge is to put the equity lens, but the lens that I also want to see, and Susan and I have been talking about this, is how do we put the dementia lens on everything as well? How do we make sure that the housing policy is dementia-friendly, that the parks policy is dementia, the emergency preparedness and disaster is dementia-friendly? So I would ask you to, exactly as your supervisor said, share your stories, give us your best ideas, and hold us accountable to make sure we're truly building a California for All across the lifespan. Thank you.
Well, wow, it's hard to follow that. There's a lot of great ideas and information. I'm not going to take very long, I'm just going to take a few minutes. I'm Maya Altman, as you heard, and I'm the CEO of the Health Plan of San Mateo, which is a Medi-Cal Managed Care Plan in San Mateo County. So everybody on Medicaid in San Mateo County is a member of our plan. Can you pose some big questions? You know, I'm on the LTSS Long-Term Services and Supports Subcommittee, I think because I bring a local perspective from San Mateo County, and also, I've really worked hard throughout my career at the Health Plan of San Mateo to integrate health and long-term services and supports. There's a, one, you know, the way people, many people find out about services is through their doctors, right, and through the healthcare system. But the healthcare system is really isolated from the LTSS system. Most doctors, you know, geriatricians are probably, you know, have a pretty good sense of all the services and the whole person. But most doctors in the Medicaid space, for example, they don't know about adult-day healthcare, adult-day care, in-home supportive services, which are personal care services for people on Medicaid. So our goal has been trying to, is trying to bridge that chasm. And I'll give you an example of what we're trying to do. We're, at the Health Plan, we have a program called the Community Care Settings Program. We're working with people in nursing homes, because we found out that about 10% to 30% of the people who are living in nursing homes today don't really need to be there and don't want to be there, but they have no other place to go. Maybe they've lost, they've been in nursing homes so long that they've lost their house. Maybe they were homeless to begin with. I mean, there are all sorts of situations that lead to losing the ability to go back to their home. So we really focused on helping people find housing, either affordable housing developments or residential care, assisted living, a whole range of options, and helping them move back or sometimes helping somebody who's struggling in their community avoid having to go to the nursing home. And, you know, even in San Mateo County, where there's a terrible housing crisis, we've had some success. We've moved about 300 people out of nursing homes over the last few years. And And, yeah, thank you. So it is possible to do it, and it's been done around the country. You know, Kim posed the question about, you know, we spend a lot of money, especially Medicaid, on nursing home services, and most people don't want to be in a nursing home. And so, we really need to work better and smarter to find alternatives. And so, that's one of the voices I'm bringing to this process. And I think I'll stop there and let Susan.
So I was asked to talk briefly about financing and affordability, and the concept of a public long-term services and support benefit. Money is very important, but you know what else is super-important? Leadership. And it's something we've been missing in California for a long time, and we have it now. In Maya, you know, you heard what she's been able to do as a leader of San Mateo Health Plan, what Kim is doing at the Department of Aging, and what our governor is doing. And there is a new energy, which is so exciting, at the time that the demographic is starting to explode, when other states are terrified, California is full of energy and solutions. So it's a very exciting time to be in front of this. And I saw some of your eyes roll about a 10-year plan, but we do need a 10-year plan. There are millions of Californians involved in this master plan for aging, and as you heard, you know, Maya's mom lived to be 100, so she aged for over four decades. So this isn't as simple as first five, five years, or even K through 12, that's, you know, that's not even 12 years. So it's a daunting task, and it's a very exciting time to be working with leaders like Kim and Maya. So on the financing side, we hear a lot about federal entitlements, Medicare, Medicaid, Social Security, but what we hear at the Alzheimer's Association, when we work directly with families, is shock when they discover that they have a need, and it's not covered by Medicare, Social Security, VA, or if they're eligible, by Medicaid. That the very services that people are looking for, counting on, you know, many people drive by a lovely assisted living community and think, "I don't want to live there, but if I need to, that's where I'll go," and they assume that Medicare will pay for it. And then they discover, that's not the case. So we've been working in coalition with over 20 organizations, aging and disability groups that are all statewide. We started about three years ago, to develop a public long-term services and support benefit, something that could help the middle class. There are about 20% of the population qualify for Medicaid. The Medicaid, Medi-Cal program is not perfect, but it does provide a series of benefits and services, including in-home supportive services, paid nursing home care. And then there are about 20% of the population that can self-fund their care, because they have the resources. But in the middle, there are about 60% of the population that may not have the cash on hand to pay $25 an hour for in-home care, may not be able, while paying for college and a mortgage, to pay $12,000 a month for assisted living. We know people are leaving the workforce to provide care to a loved one, and they're foregoing their own retirement, and savings, and income, in order to serve as a caregiver. So about three years ago, we started by collecting data, so happy to hear the governor's data-driven. We started by asking the legislature to fund the California Health Interview Survey, and to ask questions about long-term services and support utilization, had never been asked in our state. We'll ask questions about nutrition, how many servings of broccoli, how many fresh fruits a day, you know, the whole list of things. Never asked questions about aging, LTSS, Alzheimer's, dementia. So we have that survey underway. Then, we thought, if we're ever going to have a public benefit, something that might include a payroll tax, where somebody qualifies, and they're eligible for maybe $100, $200, $300 a day for a period of time, in order to offer that benefit, we need to examine what the cost would be. If it's offered to everyone, zero to age 150, and they get it for unlimited period of time, it will cost this. If it's offered from age 65 and above, for three years, it will cost this. So the legislature and the governor approved a study by Milliman, a very respected actuarial firm, that's now doing an actuarial study to look at the different levers in California, so we can thoughtfully plan for such a benefit. And that's underway now, with the commitment of the governor and our legislature. So the data on utilization's being collected, the feasibility study is underway, actuarial study is underway, and the master plan includes, this is one of the recommendations, to consider a public long-term services and support benefit, similar to one that passed in Washington State earlier this year. So my question to you, if you're looking for something to speak to, would be, would you be willing to pay a payroll tax of half a cent, one cent, for all of your working years, to pay into such a fund? And would you want a benefit that's very comprehensive and long-lasting? Or would you want something that's more of a catastrophic nature, that comes in in a crisis for a short term, to get you back on track? So those are the questions to pose, if you didn't bring a story of your own to share tonight.
Okay, now it's your turn to take the mics, and we're going to have two volunteers, who are going to run over to you, if you raise your hand and bring a mic to you. Okay, so we've got someone here, and I just want to mention, you can also ask questions, if you want, of our experts, and they'll get up and answer, or they may feel they want to get up and say something after you speak, so go ahead.
I'm Dr. Elna Times. My degree is in Health Administration, with a specialty on seniors and Alzheimer's. And my dissertation was on adult daycare, in the Bay Area counties, nine Bay Area counties plus Santa Cruz. And I wanted to know, from a business standpoint, what the problems were. There were two that came out. One was the lack of stable funding, and the second was communication, in the general sense, and let me expand on both of those. The stable funding had to do with any kind of government services, or funding, plus whatever it is that the families could come up with. What we found was that there's a lot more people who want adult daycare, but can't afford it, because the average cost in the Bay Area is between $85 and $100 a day, and people just don't carry that around in their jeans. So they look around for grants, for state funding, for help from the county, et cetera. The second thing, just briefly, the second thing is communication. An awful lot of people out there who need adult daycare, don't know about it. So the problem is that the facilities have openings, but they don't know how to attract the people who need it. And this is a case of educating the entire community, from those who offer health services, all the way down to people who are boomers.
Yes, adult daycare and adult-day healthcare, both are extremely critical. They are Medicaid, adult-day healthcare is a Medicaid-funded services, but we need many more of them. And I know at our Health Plan, we try to really make that service available. So many of the people who came out of the nursing homes, we sign them up for, if they wanted to, adult-day healthcare. Adult daycare, we haven't used as much, but I definitely want to, particularly with people with Alzheimer's and cognitive disabilities, use that service a lot more for our members. I think the question you're posing is, the people who don't qualify for Medicaid, you know, who, but still can't afford it, and that's the kind of person that the proposal Susan talked about is addressed to.
Does anybody else want to talk? We have some in there, but if you're going to talk about adult daycare, and how you afforded it, and how it affected your life, when your loved one was in it, we want to hear more.
Hi, my name's Kirsten Ergensmuller, I work with the Ombudsman Services in San Mateo County, and I've only worked for about five years, but during that time, I've run into some people who hit that third stage, and have outlived their savings. They've lived in this area for their whole lives, they raised kids, they worked, they paid their taxes, they had a home, they sold the home, they moved into assisted living, thinking that they had enough money. And now it's run out, and what they have left is basically Social Security, and there's nowhere we can send them. So they, finding some way of patching money for those people who have outlived their money, and have just the government funding now left, but don't really need skilled nursing. They're, you know, they're healthy, may have some cognitive issues, they need help with their activities of daily living, but they don't need to be in skilled nursing. We find places for them, then, tiny, tiny boarding cares, the six beds, that are very inexpensive, we used to be able to find them, we can't find them anymore. But the care staff there can't afford to live in the area. So they are sleeping in the garages, sleeping in the fields outside of the homes, in order to provide the care for people who need it. And they're tired, they're exhausted, they aren't necessarily giving the best care, even though they want to. And we feel like we're stuck in this place, where we're supposed to be investigating abuse and neglect, and we're finding the situation isn't great, but there's not enough money to pay for something great, what do we do? So it's, again, this housing issue, both for caregivers, and for people who have outlived their resources.
How scary to be dealing with so many issues when you're getting old, and to watch your wallet get thinner and thinner in the process. Yes, let's go, is there, who's our next person? Okay.
Hi, I'm Carmen Brammer, and I live in San Jose. I have been the caregiver of my mom for the past 11 years, and she's at the stage now, though, where she is in need of being in a facility. So I've experienced a lot of challenges, and I'm glad, I've met Kim, I've had the pleasure of meeting her, so I thank you for that. And I'm glad that we're having this conversation, because I've discovered a few things that have been really, really difficult, and I'm hoping that we can, while we're waiting for this plan to be implemented, and in place in 10 years, that if we can catch some of the low-hanging fruit now, and fix those areas, that we get, when that plan comes about, we're going to be in a much better state. So to that end, I have discovered that some of the oversight service organizations that are managing some of these facilities, are not quite doing the job that they could and should be doing, and the support that I was expecting from them wasn't there. And I've had to bumble in the darkness by myself, to get to some kind of understanding, and not feel frustrated, and upset, and despondent, and angry with the system. So my hope is that this plan is going to address that. One request I have of you, I know that we've got all, you've got the committees, you've got the stakeholder committee, the research committee, and the LTSS committee, I won't say the whole acronym there. I would love for you to include someone who is in my situation, who I'm not, don't have any letters after my name, I, average, middle-class person, who, you know, has a mother who has, uses MediMedi, and I've discovered, there are certain nuances, as you're working through the process, when you have MediMedi, that it's very important to educate people. So I would love for you guys to put more folks like us on these committees. I know they're already well underway, and if it can't happen this year, but at least include that in the plan as we move forward, because that's critical for this thing to be success. I have been walking this path for two years, and I can tell you, I experienced things I never thought I would ever experience in my life, and it's a shame, it's really a shame, how older people are treated. It hurts my heart to go through these things with my mother.
Can you give us one example, where it could have been so much better if there was support?
My mother was at a facility in Los Altos, I won't say the name right now, beautiful facility, gorgeous facility. She was in, she got in there on December 2018. On the 19th, 10 days later, she had a fall, fractured her back. Two months later, she had another fall, sprained her ankle. Couple months later, she had another fall, fractured her rib. In total, she had nine falls while at this facility, in a span of 10 months. And I reached out for assistance, but never really got any here, until, I've got to give my Assemblyman a lot of kudos, Ash Kalra, my Assemblyman, I went to him, met with him, sat down with him, and his district director, and they took it and ran with the ball, and I just, I'm so grateful they did that, because they contacted Department of Public Health on my behalf, and I ended up getting a wonderful 20-something-page report that substantiated my claims, that this facility was not doing their job. But, all they got was a, "we'll fix it on these dates," and I don't know what happened after that. And so my mother had falls even after this report. Then they, because she's on Medi-Cal, we had some issues, I'm not going to give you all the details, and they ended up suing us for unlawful detainer. That happened right at Christmas. And then, I appealed to Department of Healthcare Services, the HCS. They denied my appeal. I had two to three days to move my mother. That, to me, is unbelievably un, I'm going to control my mouth, I have a potty mouth, so I have to control it. Yes, yes. And I had to move her, moved her, feeling good, it's a sister location of this place, felt good about it, it's not quite the same, it's an older facility, but I'm like, okay, she's going to be fine here, because they seem to be much more engaged and caring. And just got a call last night, moved her in on December 23rd, just got a call last night, that she fell again. And the reason she fell is because, even though we've stressed, they know that she's a high fall risk, they left her in the bathroom by herself, because they had to answer another call.
Thank you so much, yeah, thanks for sharing.
Thank you so much.
Okay, we have somebody over here. Oh, I'm sorry, let's give the...
I just want to honor that, and just give that a moment to just really honor that, because we are all here because we're optimistic, and have energy, but we also feel a great urgency about the suffering that's going on out there. So I don't want us, our happy talk about the planning process, to think that, I won't speak for you, but, I mean, we all feel this very deeply, and I really appreciate you bringing that, sharing your pain with us, because it's, you know, we're here because we believe we can do better, and we're also here because we know we have to do better. I will say, the nursing home situation is particularly vivid for us, and the governor, it's acknowledged, there's a backlog, and the governor has put, just put money in the budget, but this is to your point of, we're not waiting for the plan. We need to think, and be strategic, and be innovative, and have long-term goals, but we also need to act. And so, there are some, and one of the places where that is, is in this area you raised. So the governor's budget does have, for more inspections, get out of the backlog on nursing home complaints, that isn't, I don't mean to suggest that more inspectors is the solution to everything you just raised, but, and I would please ask you to keep raising this issue, but I just wanted to both speak to the urgency in every sense, that a 10-year plan is about the magnitude of the problem, but that should not give us any time or space to rest, when, as you said, right now, today, the people are suffering, and we can and must do better immediately.
My name is Scott McLagan. I was a long-term care ombudsman for Santa Clara County for 18 months, a few years ago. I've been a caregiver for my wife for the last 20 years. She's been in two skilled nursing facilities, she's been on Medi-Cal, she was abused in one of the skilled nursing facilities. I care for her at home now, I have four caregivers around the clock. I've moved my mother in, to care for her for the last two and a half years of her life, diagnosed with Alzheimer's, I had to hire four more caregivers, different type of care. The issue that was brought up a little bit earlier, is the transition. The transition from skilled nursing facility. A mother falls, father falls, breaks a hip, they go into a skilled nursing facility, you have up to 100 days on your insurance, or Medicare, up to 100 days. At 21 days, or 19, if it happens to be on a Friday, you'll get a notice of plateau, okay? The reason for that is because you have a right to appeal. You appeal, that denial comes back before the 30th day. The 30th... The 30th day is key because after the 30th day, they have to give you a 30-day notice for eviction. They want you out before then. Okay. Now, if you have resources, you can pay the co-pay, you can stay longer, all of those things, that very rarely happens. What happens is you apply for Medi-Cal and you get Medi-Cal. You may not even need to be in the skilled nursing facility, as you say, because, but you will stay there for the remainder of your life. Medi-Cal will continue pay. You go outside, smoke your cigarettes in your wheelchair, come back in, do all those things. Everybody has seen that. When in actuality, when in actuality, they could be in what you referred to as a board and care, which is actually a residential care facility for the elderly. They are not reimbursed for anything. They're not reimbursed for food, they're not reimbursed for, for their employees, nothing. Right now, I have a friend that owns multiple residential care facilities for the elderly. The minimum they need to operate is $6,200 a month from their, from their residence. If they don't, they can't pay their employees, they can't pay their insurances, they can't buy the food. $6,200 a month. Where are these people getting it? They're not. Medicare doesn't pay, or excuse me, Medi-Cal doesn't pay for it. I think there's, there was one, there was one Medi-Cal RCFE in Santa Clara County and that was horrible, I thought they were going to close it down. But that's the big issue, the transition. You're paying $300 a day in a skilled nursing facility for somebody that can be in a RCFE at $200 a day. That's a savings.
Thank you very much. We have a comment.
So thank you for that because that's exactly the problem we're trying to solve, where we are paying for care in a residential care facility, but we're paying for it out of our plan reserves, so we can't sustain that. You know, we did it as a pilot program. But the good news...
That's Sam Mateo.
It's Sam Mateo. But the good news is that one of the governor's proposals in reform for Medi-Cal is that health plans will be able to use these board and care homes, assisted living, residential care facilities, they have different names, but it's all the same thing, and pay for them and get reimbursed. It's not going to be a Medi-Cal benefit yet, but our hope is that in a few years, it will be a Medi-Cal benefit because of course it makes sense. It's a fraction of the cost of living in a nursing home.
Federally regulated as well, right?
Right, but it's up to the state about whether to include assisted living as a benefit. So I think there is a recognition of the problem that you're outlining and I think there's a way forward to solving that, but hopefully it'll happen sooner rather than later.
Hi, my name's Martha Chan and I cared for, oh boy, I can't do this without crying, for my husband for 12 years. I'm fine, I always have Kleenex. Well, yeah, of course. So I cared for my husband for 12 years, he was diagnosed in 2008, no, I'm sorry, 10 years. He was diagnosed in 2008 with dementia at Kaiser. And Kaiser, bless their hearts, gave us medication and a flyer about Alzheimer's Association and that was kind of the extent of the support. So I appreciate what you said about communication, that one of the things the plan should include, in my humble opinion, not so humble, is lots and lots of training for doctors coming into the field and retraining for people because it's, yeah, anyway. Caregivers kind of need to be included in the plan too, despite confidentiality, blah, blah, blah. I also wanted to, I don't know who was speaking behind me, about just having to find every damn resource ourselves, that if I had not been connected to the Alzheimer's Association, I don't know what I would have done. Because I went to a support group there, which was lots of fun because I got to be in a room with people who were way ahead of me on the journey, which was really scary. But I learned so much from those people and from the wonderful staff at Alzheimer's who are always available, who helped me find Rose Kleiner, where my husband was for about two years. And I can't emphasize the importance of Adult Day, you're supposed to be holding this for me, but I guess I'm doing okay. Oh, thank you. Because he, he had to stop working, I was still working part-time, he was at home alone, which is not really a good idea with somebody even in fairly early-stage dementia. So they helped me find Rose Kleiner, which was a wonderful place for him to be for a couple of years. Took a lot of load off of me and our daughters who are in the area, we have adult daughters. And where was I going to go from that? And when the wonderful staff here took me aside and said, he's not going to be able to benefit from this program too much longer, like not right now, but you probably need to start thinking. I went back to Alzheimer's and a wonderful Alex Morris, tell her hi for me if she's still there, helped me find the perfect place for him. It was all the way down in Los Gatos, but it cost several thousand dollars less than anything I'd found on the peninsula. And he was there for several years and took, and was very well taken care of. But like each step of the way, I had to do all this homework to try to figure out what was going on. And of course, the minute he stopped working, he was kind of the primary wage earner. I mean, I worked, but for nonprofits and mental health, so you know what that pays. So we blew through our retirement, both of our retirements in about a year. And I got him on social security disability, which was great. Very, actually had good experience with social security people. But I placed him in residential care, not knowing how I was going to pay for it, maybe second mortgage, maybe sell one of my children, I don't know. And this always feels funny, but you've heard me say it too. So good luck. My stepmother died a month after I placed Waho and left me a nice amount of money. And so I was able to pay for his care and actually still have a little bit left over, you know, for me to go on living. So a whole lot of stuff, better training, better communication, more support for all of the wonderful people in nonprofits who are still doing this work. And what else did I want to say? I think that was it.
That's so eloquent, as always, Martha. Martha's an example of somebody who found information through the Alzheimer's Association. I'm going to give it back to you in a sec. But for everyone of Martha, I'll bet there's people that didn't find the information, didn't find the referral from someone that they could trust until farther down the line. So if you want to share some of that, I think getting information and referrals that you can trust seems to be a big part of the recipe. Martha, keep going.
I just was going to answer the question that I think Susan posed, yes, I would definitely... Can we see a show of hands? How many of you would pay a small amount in payroll tax in order to have this benefit when you need it? Yes, thank you. And we're all going to vote, right? Okay.
Thank you again for sharing and I'm a crier too, so we're all just going to cry together. These are, these are really important stories, but I just wanted to lift up the resource that the Alzheimer's Association has been to people and to the state on two, two fronts. One is this issue of information assistance. The model that the Alzheimer's Association has, a national to a local hotline and training and computers, we literally went and looked at and are looking at, is that something the state with community partnerships would replicate? How do we network? I mean, I think we have technology in California and some wonderful nonprofit partners, so let's not reinvent the wheel, let's learn from Alzheimer's. And the other piece is this issue on training and screening and the first point, I was with a doctor from UCSF last week who said, we just have to declare that we are, he used to say, oh, we need as many geriatricians as pediatricians. And she said, that's done, that's never going to happen, we've lost that, it is too late. It's not demographically possible to have geriatricians. Am I even saying that word right?
Geriatrician.
No, I don't mean geriatrician, I mean, I mean geriatrician, I mean the doctor. Okay, like the pediatrician, it's like there's too many vowels in there somehow. Geriatricians. And that she was saying, what we need is to make everybody a little G, all of the people need to know the four Ms and get trained. And so that's what I'm very interested in, is learning, and the four Ms are new to me, but probably not to this room in terms of that we all need to be asking, when we see an adult, older adult, what matters to you? What's your priority? What matters? How's your mobility falling? This is the word Susan and I want to change. How's your mind, which is both about mental health and about your cognitive functioning? I think the fancy word is mentation. I don't like that fancy word. But what matters? What's your mobility? What's your mind? And what are your meds? Your meds. And if, if everyone knows to ask and is trained in how to have a conversation, whether it's the ER, the EMT, your primary care, your eye doctor, that would go a long way. And so I think those kinds of ideas from the Alzheimer's Association and hearing your experience is what we're trying to not just catch up from something we're behind on 20 years ago, but leap forward. So thank you.
Hi, my name is Michelleene Hodge and I am a caregiver for my mom, and this is my sister Christina.
From Ohio.
From Ohio. I am local here with my mom in San Jose. About three years ago, my mom had some issues. She's been living independently over the last three years. About three years ago, she had some incontinence issues. So she was living in a senior apartment complex, affordable for senior apartment complex, and she had some incontinence issues, but she was too ashamed of it. Fast forward a little bit, we tried to get her into a program, ONLOCK. She got denied because she wasn't voluntarily wanting to be a part of their program. She was too embarrassed. So anyways, keep fast forwarding. She fell last April. We placed her, she fell because she had a UTI, she was... So we placed her, no, they wanted to send her home from the hospital, so they said, we can manage her at home. I said, well, she can't even walk because she also has some disabilities with her back, hernia, arthritis. And so we placed her in a skilled nursing facility, she was there for five months, fell 16 times. It changed my work schedule to come in the morning and be part of her OT and PT because she was refusing it because I just wanted her home. So God bless the facility that said, okay, we'll come at 6:00 in the morning for you to work, make your work schedule. And we did PT and OT in the morning at 6:00 AM. We got her home, she's been home five months. I tried to place her again with ONLOCK because we felt that if she is busy during the day, she'll be fine in the evening. And they denied her again because she was not safe to live in the community. I appealed it and I had my hearing last Thursday, that night she fell and broke her hip at That's where we're at. Now we are trying to place her and we're constantly being rejected by skilled facilities. She's been in the hospital a week. The resources are there, but when you get the rejection, the denials, what do you do? I do a lot of research and we have one of the wealthiest, I think we are the wealthiest county in California. We have 59 skilled nursing facilities. When you look online, some of them are, the star ratings are very low, you find abuse. And when you try to get the ones that have the higher ratings, they're the ones that reject you. So, sorry, that's my story, my sister, my story. I don't know if my sister wants to share anything, but thank you for listening.
So I live in the state of Ohio, I'm Christina Chandler. I came to, as my sister, with my mom. The most frustrating thing for me was going to these skilled nursing facilities and as soon as you mentioned the word Medi-Cal, just, you can't even say it, it's a bad word because they think that if she goes beyond the 21 days, they're going to get stuck with someone like that. Now, I didn't know that, so I'm calling and saying, oh, my mother has this, my mother has this, my mother has this. And she, we, we just kept getting callbacks saying, she's been rejected. And so the hospital is saying, let's just send it to all of them and let's see who will take her. I thought, what? How does this work? And so I just, I, that's when my sister called me this afternoon and said, let's go to this forum. And so I can hear the pain of all these folks in here and I'm sure there are similar issues in different states. I also care for, I'm long, care for my mother-in-law, so my sister cares for my mother, but I'm trying to take an active role in my own mother's life right now. And just hearing what I heard within this week has been very disappointing. So loved hearing the fact that you're going to make some changes here and see what we can do for our aging parents, yeah. One thing is, I'm in the financial industry and I strongly suggest that if you're young, that you are going to age and you are going to pass away. So why not start thinking about that when you're young and, and start investing in your aging and in your healthcare for the aging process and for your death? It just makes it easier for the people that are going to be caring for you. And so again, I'm in the financial industry, I take all the classes for all the, I'm in training, I'm very heavily licensed. And so I strongly suggest that people take that into consideration when they're doing their financial planning.
Thank you. There's probably not going to be any kind of a statue or a plaque for your mom or for the two of you sisters, but you're heroes. And there's a lot of people in this room who are heroes. And it's a good thing that you're sharing, but I wish your path was a lot easier. Do we have anybody that wanted, okay, so let's go to our next.
Hi, I'm Dave. I wanted to talk to you, address your, your topic, Susan. So my sister and I are both caregivers from a distance from mom. Mom lives in New York and mom has no income, so we are supporting her. And now we are struggling with how we would be able to pay for long-term care, you know, assisted living and eventually memory care for her because it's ridiculously expensive. So that's one, one issue that, yes, funding is important to us. We have kids, we need to send them to college, we're struggling with that. And now on top of that, we need to figure out how to help pay for mom as well. But then back to the other issue that you raised earlier about paying, would we, would I be willing to pay for long-term care? And my answers are resounding yes, and in fact, I already am. I did buy several years ago a long-term care policy for my wife and I, and it costs just shy of $3,000 a year, which sounds like a lot, but man, oh man, am I glad I have that. It is a policy that goes up with inflation every year and it is lifetime unlimited. And I got locked into that thing and I'm glad I have it, right? So if it comes down to the question of how much are you willing to pay, you know, and this covers my wife and myself, right? So it's 250 bucks a month, 125 bucks a month, but this is to an insurance company and they're there to make money. So I'm guessing that if you try to do this as a policy and everyone gets to buy into it, we can do it for a lot cheaper than that, all right? So, and then lastly, I have a question for you. You said, you know, it's a system like you pay in and then you get to pull out. So would it be like a social security system where if you, I'm 60 right now, if I get to, if I get to start this and I get to pay in for five years, does that mean that I only get this much benefit or, 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 you know, do the... Or, you know, do the people that come after me get to pay for me today?
Thanks for sharing that. That's the point of the actuarial study, to look at how many quarters someone would be in the workforce. And if it included people who didn't have the opportunity to pay into it, but they became eligible, that would cost more for the people who are paying into it. So those are some of the models that they would be exploring. How long you've been in the workforce, if you worked full-time or part-time, and hopefully not to... You know, it would have to start with some group when it becomes eligible. And some people may not benefit from it, but the hope is to get the most people eligible as soon as possible would be the idea.
So I am primary caregiver for my mother. She was diagnosed with early onset Alzheimer's three years ago. Been a really difficult process, and it's definitely getting to the stage now where it's beyond my ability to give as much as I am. It's not sustainable anymore. For some background context, I left working in tech a little over three years ago to start a nonprofit focused on parents and helping them take better care of their own well-being. And in the process of moving back home, my mom got into a car accident. Physiologically, she was fine, but that led to a series of tests that helped us realize that she had Alzheimer's. And so I, you know, I'm in the situation, the predicament of being in the middle-class gap. You know, from an income perspective, my mother definitely qualifies for Medi-Cal. I personally am not making income as I'm trying to get this nonprofit off the ground. So I have Medi-Cal, but I don't really need it as much as she actually needs it. But because we have a family living trust, which puts her outside of the requirement of Medi-Cal, I'm trying to figure out what to do. She doesn't qualify for a special needs trust because she's 68 going on 69, which the cap on a special needs trust is 65. You know, otherwise, I would say, "Let's move those assets into a special needs trust so that she can get on Medi-Cal." And the other issue, I mean, something I'm directly experiencing today is dental coverage. So oftentimes, it's been shown that, you know, bacteria that you get in your mouth and oral health can be linked to Alzheimer's. And so my mom had a procedure done today, even with the insurance that we got through AARP and United Healthcare, it cost us over $5,000. And that's just for the one procedure of this bridge. She still has other work that needs to be done to remove infections and things like that. So, you know, I have Dentacal. You know, it covers a cleaning and basic routine stuff, and that's fine. But, you know, what are we doing to incorporate dental coverage into what's considered to be medical health, a medical health concern? So, yeah, I mean, I think there's a significant frustration on my end for... And people have voiced it as well in that, you know, my mom has the best Medicare Advantage plan that money can buy, but because she needs emotional and mental well-being support, that's not considered a medical need, and so it's not covered. And so, yeah, it's leaving me and my family in a very difficult place because, you know, I have the flexibility of working from home. That basically means that I have to take care of everything. You know, certainly, I got a couple of weekends off here and there, but when I get respite, I find myself going great. Now I have time to work.
And like you said, it's just not sustainable. And you're so young and ready to make a difference in the lives of others if you could. So I want to mention something I forgot, which is that all of your comments are being noted and are going to be part of the record of this master plan on aging, correct? I wish we could have everybody give the full story, but if you could abbreviate into bullet points, that would be great. And there is a way to give the whole story at that website that somebody mentioned called EngageCA.org.
Can you just let people know? Oh, yeah. So when you came in, you were handed a clipboard and a piece of paper that says EngageCA.org on the top. If you feel like writing things that you didn't get a chance to say, you can either leave it with us today, and we'll give those to Kim. And if you put your name and email, they'll subscribe you to emails, so you'll get updates on the master plan for aging. And it also does have that web address, so if you don't feel like writing on paper, like a lot of us have forgotten how to do that, you can just type on your computer.
Good. Okay, we've got some people in the back, and we have Paula up front.
Hi, thanks. And I want to thank all of you for being here today. So hi, I'm Paula Wolfson. I'm the manager of social work at Avenidas. And there are other geriatric social workers in the room tonight, and we're kind of on the front lines of all of this. Some of us are career social workers. I've been doing it 30 years. Most of my career in Washington DC, Capitol here, so now I'm here with all of the wonderful tech support we have here. And it's really amazing to see how things in 30 years have just gotten worse. And I've worked in nursing homes, emergency rooms. I've been a hospital discharge planner. And the two sisters, come and talk to me when we're done here. There's so much we can do better. So first of all, family caregivers, they should be able to accrue their social security benefits if they have to leave their jobs to be caregivers, number one. It's ridiculous to think about social security and Medicare and the way that we now operate it. It can be done so much differently. And the way to do that, of course, is you have to continually lobby in Congress. Now, Dr. Ayadi, activist geriatrician here, has testified in Sacramento and in DC. His testimony is on C-SPAN. It's called "The Challenges of Aging and Really in Curedgiving in America." He's probably got the State of the Union address on caregiving. So if you need a partner, he's your partner. He is very articulate. He can help move all of this forward. February 5th, the Alzheimer's Association is having an advocacy day in Sacramento. You can take your voice to your representatives, but you need to sign up and do that. I'm thinking of going. Our system is broken. We all know that. That's why we're here. There's a huge gap between the skilled care concept and what that really means and what people really need. So the discharge planners, which I've been, are so rushed in our hospitals to get people out because these Medicare codes say you don't qualify for skilled care. So if you're a 90-year-old person and you've got a fracture, you know, fractures just heal. For some reason, you're going to stay in the emergency room for a day or two, and it's called Observations Day. You're not going to be admitted. You're going to get a high copay. You may end up in a board and care, and they're not all the same. Board and care, assisted memory care, they're all very different. The level of care and the quality is different. Our nursing home care is all very different. It's not regulated well, okay? So I am somebody who had to deal with that personally, too. I have a personal story about that. The training for all of these systems needs to be changed, and we have a surplus of wonderful people who care about aging, new immigrants, who would love to have these jobs and love to be trained. And no, they shouldn't be kept out of our areas. They should be invited in, trained, and schooled. Children, high school students, junior high school students, love their grandparents. Let's train them because their world is going to be a world of older people, and we're not paying attention to that whole generation moving forward while there's going to be this increased longevity. There is so much we can do about this master plan, but we have to change the concept. So, okay, let's just talk about skilled care dementia, Alzheimer's. Those are medical conditions. If you're in a hospital and you get that diagnosis, that's a brain disease. It's a medical condition. And then the care that you need is considered custodial care. No. And then it gets evaluated by how many activities of daily living you can do or cannot do. It's absolutely ridiculous because we're seeing the toll on the family caregiver who's now becoming ill sooner than the person getting that due diligence care. So this whole concept of a master plan is wonderful, but let's really look at what all of these systems are doing, how they need to speak to each other. And there is this huge gap between the hospital skilled care, which is about getting people out, versus the care, okay? So the care in the hospitals is treating the disease we need to treat the person. Thank you.
Thank you, Paula. That is so good because it not only says we got a lot of work to do, but there's so much opportunity. And hopefully, it'll show up in the master plan as something that we all grow from. So let's go to some of the people we have.
I'm an elder care consultant placement agent in San Mateo, and sometimes I help people find Medi-Cal placement, Medi-Cal beds. And it is very difficult to find a bed. You have to call several times. This could go on for months, just call after call after call, in-person visits. It's so hard to find the right person, and you get the nasty comments. I remember walking into one, and I asked if there was a Medi-Cal bed, and they said, "This is a clean facility, and we'd like to keep it that way." It's very hurtful. It's very difficult, and I try my best to take as many of these cases as I can and try to find it, but it's an overload. It's just so difficult. So we definitely need more Medi-Cal beds and alternatives to just putting them in a skilled nursing facility because most of these people, we have to say, "Yeah, they qualify for it," but they really could be in assisted living or a board and care facility. And it would be so much nicer to be able to point them in that direction instead of to these subpar skilled nursing facilities, and I won't name them, but it just would be nicer for them to have more options and to have more education on how to plan and save for retirement so that you don't run out of money. So I really appreciate this tonight. Thank you for hearing us, and thank you so much.
I'm Alan Cornfield. I'm an ombudsman of San Mateo County. I volunteered for several years doing it, and then I recently became staff. But my principles are the same. I was a caregiver for mom and in-laws, which is why I'm doing this now because there is a need. But my point, short and sweet, is there are too many people in this room for this meeting to have lasted an hour and a half only. And I would like to recommend that you come back maybe three times by summer. Let's do this, maybe not monthly, but at least quarterly, all of you, same team, all of you, same caregivers, same people who care about what we're doing. And let's make this a consistent community talk and not just politics as usual, please.
I have an ex-wife who's been diagnosed with Alzheimer's and dementia, and her... Our younger son, who is 40 yesterday, he is her caretaker and gave up his work to take care of her. And our question is... My question is, is there compensation for caretaker, family caretakers? And how do you get there? And there's... I imagine it's a lot of bureaucratic stuff you have to go through to get it.
Happy birthday to your son. If your ex-wife qualifies for Medicaid or Medi-Cal, which is called Medi-Cal, okay, in that case, there is a program called In-Home Supportive Services in California. It's unique because it allows the beneficiary to choose who will care for them. And if they choose a family member, that family member can be paid by Medicaid, Medi-Cal.
Do you know what the reimbursement rate is for that?
It's very low, usually about, you know, close to minimum wage, but...
Well, there's two rates. One, if you have a caregiver, one if it's a family member. If you... Actually, the way they do it is if you pay direct, it's one rate. If they pay, it's another.
Can you repeat what he says?
He was commenting on the rate of pay, and he said there's a differential. If it's a professional from the community, they're paid one rate, and if it's a family member, they're paid a lower rate.
Actually, it's direct or direct from the person or direct from the, from In-Home Supportive Services.
Oh, okay. Direct from the direct relationship with the caregiver or through In-Home Supportive Services, which might be the county or a public authority. And that varies in all 58 counties.
Hi, my name is Judy. I just want to listen. Thank you. Even though, you know, how can I say? I usually work for the Santa Clara County on the Medi-Cal unit, and I heard about the In-Home Supporting Service. And over 20 years ago, so I worked for the financial service like the gentleman talking about. He bought the policy for the long-term care for 10 years already. What I want to say on the Medicare because we don't educate a lot about the long-term care. So I think usually for the healthcare, they take care of the acute care, means the care you can getting better within the 90-day. But the long-term care is a chronic care. So people didn't know about that. So that's why we all end up... So now they say, "When you have a problem, you have to thinking about who..." Something happened, who will take care for you? And who is the backup person? And where? You ask where, and you have to ask, "You want to take care at home, assisted living, or skilled nursing?" And this one, you have to communicate with your family member when you have something. So I worked for a financial service over 20 years, and I think a long-term care is very important, even though right now people were thinking about Medicare taking everything. And I watched the healthcare channel last two weeks, and I heard, but I don't went there. On the Switzerland, they say for the people about 60 years old, they will volunteer to take care about the older people for the community, okay? So, but they allow you about 30, 300 hours or something, okay? So you get the credit. So in the future, when you're getting old, you can use that credit for yourself.
Thank you. Let's try to get two more comments.
Hi, I'm Sharmila Shah, and I'm a social worker. I work at Stanford in Aging Adult Services. I'm a transitional coordinator. And I wanted to say to the policymakers that in all the work we do, it's also important to look at the other side, which I think hasn't come up as much in today's discussion. And what I'm talking about is, even though you're... Even though there are very few people that do buy the long-term health insurance, I think a big reason for that is what are you really getting out of it? Because it is so heavily capped, and it is... It's got, I mean, so many exclusions to it. It's very difficult for us, even as social workers who've been in the field, to even understand caps, Medi-Cal, Medicare. It's like, almost like a PhD in itself to explain it. So, I mean, I know there are a lot of caregivers who come up to us or patients who come up to us with these questions. Even though we have our own department that handles it, it becomes really complicated for us to explain it. So I would say to the policymakers, it would be really useful to simplify some of these things as well as to look at caps on the other side, which is, I mean, can really an assisted living charge like $16,000 a month? I mean, where's the cap there? We talk about like rent controls for homes, but what about for everything else? So that's where I want to say there's kind of more to it on the other side, to the policymakers here, and thank you for this opportunity for us to talk.
And we're going to get one last comment and then a final word from Kim McCoy-Wade.
Well, first of all, I'd like to say that I am very excited about the master plan for aging. I have a lot of hope that it's going to make the necessary changes we need. I'm a program manager for a Medicare counseling program called High Cap, so I'm very familiar with long-term care policies. But being on the front end, at the end of the day, sometimes you go home and you go, "I just can't fix the world's problems." Because you hear about all the issues that have been brought up. I have, off the record, don't film this, I have helped people understand how to get into a facility if they don't have Medi-Cal yet, but they're planning to get mom and dad on it. I provide that advice without telling them it's advice. I refer to our ombudsman, which is an extremely underfunded program. I hear about people who cannot afford their medications because they're middle-class citizens, and they've been paying their taxes and doing everything right, but because their income and assets are too high, they don't qualify for anything. And they're crying in my counseling room because they can't do it. And I live in the most expensive county in the country. Thank you to Atherton. So I hear about all these issues, and I see all the good things happening in our county, especially spearheaded by our managed care program for Medicaid Health Plan of San Mateo, as well as all my community partners who care. I'm not sure if long-term care policies are the solution. It's a dying product. It's a dying product. It's very expensive. We meet with clients who cannot afford their policy increases. We're dealing with that right now with one company who's increased it by 80%. Their estimated daily benefit may, if they're lucky, be $150 per day. Sir, they do not sell unlimited care anymore. You can only get a policy now for three, for three years. So yes, we've all talked about it, so I am hopeful. Kim, I've talked to you before at the HighCap training. I think I brought up some things. You told me, no, we couldn't do funding for HighCap more, but I'm still working on that with you. But I have hope in Governor Newsom. He did change, he legalized gay marriage, which changed the country. And I'm really hoping he could change this for the state of California and we could lead the way for the country. So thank you.
Thank you. We have a final word.
Yes, yes. What a powerful time we've had together. I'm just so, so grateful and so moved. A couple, a couple things. You know, just to speak right to it, we do need to get more money. We got to figure out how to get more money. And what my comment to you, I hope that, Dave, we talked, was we can't keep coming and saying, "This alphabet needs money, this alphabet needs money, this..." We have a bigger problem than our alphabets being underfunded. We have to do the vision work and the planning work too. So yes, we, I think, I think every conversation we've had, and you all have been in the room with our department, I mean, money doesn't grow on trees. We have to figure it out and we got to find money and find new money, but there, money is needed. It's just we've got to, we've got to do both. We've got to get that vision so we can explain how this money will make our lives better and our families' lives better. The other thing I want to just say, and it hasn't come up quite as much as I wanted, is that we do, I still am also concerned that so many of our programs, and you raised it with the special needs trust, that were set up for older adults aren't right for dementia. And that there's more to do, whether it's adult protective services or public guardian or IHSS. So I know I'm talking a little bit alphabet soup myself right there, but I do hope that we can also hear more about this, the particular, as dementia is the second largest cause of death among women in California now, help me get it right, Susan. It is just something that our system, it's not just about older, it's about the special and far too common issues of dementia, and so I need you all to help us get that right too. Okay, have I asked enough of you so far tonight? What I am going to do, I was just leaning over to Susan and Maya, we are so moved and we are in a lot of meetings and a lot of conversations and read a lot of reports and watch a lot of videos, but this has been really powerful. Our next all-day committee meeting is Monday and we're committed to share back what we've heard, some of your stories. This is not on the agenda, but we just put it on the agenda, so this has been so meaningful to us. I want to thank you for that. You are all heroes, but it should not be this hard. It should not be this hard. And what I will say, just, there's two things that give me hope. One is, it is our governor and the fact that he could have stood up in this room and told a story about his own experience with his father. And then, I have told the story only a few times, but at the first cabinet work group on aging, you know, when you go around and you say, "I'm Sue, I'm the secretary of so-and-so," then everybody told their story about their family. Every, the cabinet work group is all, is mostly people who are caring for their parents. And so we went around in the first half hour of the cabinet work group in California and the master plan for aging was people singing, "I can't find the information." I had to go move and I got denied. This was so, so this is, that gives me hope, that this is not an abstract idea for all of us. We are living it. I missed a couple of meetings for my own management of my own parents across the country. So we are all here with you in our various journeys and various stories. And then I will just say, I also am a lover of history. And, you know, it is out of these big crises that opportunity is created and big leaps forward happen. Martin Luther King Weekend gave us time to reflect on that. I just went over to the John Muir Historic Home in Martinez, which if you haven't been, you should go. These are people who imagined a whole different world than existed, and they could see something that everybody around them couldn't see and told them couldn't happen and shouldn't happen and wouldn't happen. But it will happen. It is going to happen in California and it will be because of conversations like this and days in Sacramento like you're going to do and continued conversations. Because if not us, who? And if not now, when? We need it, our families need it, and with you all working with us, we will get it done. So thank you so much.
Thank you for showing up. Thank you for sharing hard things that you did. And it seems like when we get a master plan, we have a great window of opportunity with Governor Newsom, but that, we have a big job ahead of us to make that master plan come to life. Thank you.
I am, thank you.